Okay, apologies for the delay. I am calling the meeting to order. If you would join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Thank you. First item of business is approving the minutes from the March 28 workshop meeting. Has everybody had a chance to look at the minutes? Motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, second?
I'll second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. The next item of business is a public hearing for the 2425 Village of Red Hook budget. May I have a motion to open the public hearing? So moved, thank you, second?
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the public hearing is now open. Is there anyone in the public? Either virtually or in the room who would like to make any comments? Hearing none?
My question is because of the number discrepancy. For the school activities. Last year was $9,000, this year it dropped down to four.
You're on the general fund, right?
Yes, case one.
Could you just state your name?
George Beekman.
And your address?
15 Cherry Street.
Thank you. So actually, if, so you're saying that in '21, '22 it was $9,000?
Yeah.
And then this year it's four?
Yeah, very usual, see that?
Yes, though, that was still COVID.
Well, '22 was definitely COVID.
So I think that some of that had to do with the school wasn't doing as many activities. It's, and actually, I will say our current budget is $5,000, but it's actually going to end up, the actual is going to be higher than that. It's going to be closer to $7,000. So I am not aware of any issues. They did not hire a different security firm, if you will, so I believe it's probably, because usually those are basketball games, for example, the prom, and I think they may not have had those that year. But as I say, it wasn't, there wasn't anything, there was no difference in our relationship with the school or anything like that. I think it was just a reduction in the number of activities.
On the police infrastructure security, it went from, last year it was $4,880, and this year it's $14,000.
Yes, that is, that is actually us providing our water infrastructure with security. And so we, that was me being the new mayor and not making sure that we had the invoices properly, is what that is. And you'll note there's none in this current budget and none in the proposed budget.
Right.
They are not, they have not stopped checking on the water infrastructure. We just, at this point, are not checking it that way.
And that changes all the time, so.
It does change all the time.
I just saw the difference.
And I, and I, I probably should not make changes like that, but that's all, that's what that is. And we continue to keep an eye on our infrastructure. Thank you for your questions, anything else? Okay. May I have a motion to close the public hearing for budget? So moved? Thank you, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Does the board have any questions? Let me, and actually, I should have done this during the public hearing, but let me just articulate the changes that I made from the March 11 budget to the April 8 budget. There's a very slight shading. It's a pretty color of yellow on my screen, but it doesn't come out strongly on paper. I just did things like under other payments in lieu of taxes, which is our pilot from Rent a Commons. I literally just rounded up so that we did not have three cents hanging out there. Franchises, I lowered to $40,000. That amount has actually just come in for this year, and it's $39,000. It varies a little. It is related to the franchise fee that we get from Charter Communications Spectrum. It's, I don't fully understand the calculation, but it is something based on number of viewers, number of, yes, perhaps you can answer that question?
It's the number of SubSARS cable subscribers in the Village of Red Hook.
That's the word I was looking for, thank you. And so we get a percentage of that. So it goes up and down, and I don't expect that to go up, so it made more sense to me to lower that. What number is that? Sorry, so I'm just. That is on the first page. It is account A1170 franchises. Ah, there I see, thank you. Got it. It's not yellow on mine, that's why I was, or shaded. No, it's a very, very light gray. If you know that's there and you look. The number is, got it, okay. Yes, just the number. Just look at the line, I was looking at the line. Thank you.
The cell isn't outlined either, which is another easier way to notice that cell.
Oh, that's true. Those are the two changes in revenue. And then under expenses, the legislative board per serve, I increased to $34,000. That is not a change in anyone's compensation. What we had in the past was, the prior deputy mayor, he contributed a portion of his income towards his health insurance. And so that reduced, I would argue that it probably should have been accounted for a little differently, but in any case, this is now, and we also did have, over the last couple of years, we didn't have a fully full terms. We had, we had periods of time where there was someone who was not in place. And so now we have a full board, everyone's engaged, and so that's, that's why that is slightly higher. If you go down on page three, account A1989.4, other general government support contract expense, that is effectively a plug for fund balance. As, as you know, in the review of our fund balance, we have plenty. We are on the high end of what we agreed would be our fund balance range. So we don't actually need additional fund balance, but we are in the process of negotiating our two union contracts, and so, and this is, and there are a couple of flexible items, and so that's an easy place to hold that funding. And so that has adjusted a little up and down, because the number needs to come out even at the end. On page four, under 3120.48, police storage. Again, we're talking a couple hundred bucks, I pulled it down to 500, because that's more reflecting accurate. And then on page five, the third line item down, it doesn't yet have a code, it's the Climate Smart Task Force. We will be, we will be making a motion to create a Climate Smart Task Force, and that with the purpose of having us become a climate smart community, which would then make us eligible for a wide variety of grants. And to support that work, there's a $500 budget put in there. And I believe that is it. So as I say, we're talking minor adjustments for this budget. Apologize for the trees that we used up to make those minor adjustments, but that's, that's what they are. And just for those looking at this year's current budget, you'll see that it's a negative. But we had approved several items that would use fund balance to pay for them. And so that's where, that's where that shows up. So at the end of the year, if we are at a negative $20,000, the fund balance just gets reduced by that $20,000. So, and frankly, I shouldn't have said this first, sorry. Too many numbers jumbling in my head. Just to clarify what this budget does, you'll note that the real property tax on the proposed budget is $1,401,440. That is the allowed amount to be at the tax cap, so it does not go over the tax cap. If you do the percent increase, it's slightly more than 2%. And the reason why it's more than 2%, even though we talk about it as a 2% tax cap, is because there are things that are taken out and put in to make the calculation. And so we have confirmed this with the State Controller's Office, that this is our correct tax cap number. The village assessment went up from $240 million to $274 million. And so what that means for the tax rate is it means that the real property tax went up a little, the assessed value went up more, which means that the tax rate went down. I hope you're following me. But what the tax rate is, it's related to your assessed value of your property. So if you have a property that's assessed at $300,000, and you've done no significant improvements that would increase the assessed value of your home, your taxes for next year will go down. The tax rate last year was 5.7 and change, meant to write that down, but I can get it. And what it is proposed to go to is basically $5.10.10744 per thousand of assessed value. For the revenue, so the revenue we're talking about is, when I round up, is $2,250,000, of which the $1,401 is real property tax. The other revenue is rounded up about $850,000. And I did take a look at that, 32% of that other revenue comes from police contracts. We contract with the town, with the school, and with Tivoli. About 18% is sales tax, plus the small pilot that we receive. 15% is the cell tower revenue. We get revenue because we rent out space on the top of the water tower to cell companies. And then 9% is state aid, that's 9% of the other revenue. If you look at this year, next year versus this year, the revenue is declining. And that's because last year, we included bond revenue that we used to purchase the garbage and leaf truck. And we also, and CHIPS was higher. CHIPS is state funding to support paving and equipment. And we used carryover last year, so last year we used a total of $136,000. We do not have that carryover anymore, because we used it all. So I am expecting that $50,000 is something that's within the realm of likely what we will get. There's been a significant amount of discussion about increasing. Nope, sorry, well, yes, CHIPS funding as well as AIM funding, which is state, state aid to municipalities. Since we don't know the budget, we don't know what we will be getting, but $50,000 seems like a reasonable amount that we could assume. And then just looking at the expenses on the general fund, I tried to do sort of a summary of, because there's so many line items, and they're in all different places. So out of the $2,250,000, again, I'm rounding up just a little, the police, the total cost of the police is about $765,000. The total cost of highways, streets, which includes garbage, snow removal, is $558,000. The fire department, our expenses here towards the fire department are roughly $186,000. Zoning and planning, which includes our planning project, is $123,000. The administration, in which I included all of the building expenses and a variety of other administrative expenses that I couldn't separate out to, as to where else they might go, comes in at about $467,000. The cost of the board and the mayor is $46,000. Court cost is about $66,000, and then that leaves me with about $39,000 of other. Just to give you an order of magnitude of what the expenses go to. So that's, that's it for the general fund. The water fund, I made no adjustments from what was originally proposed, stays the same. There's no rate increase. The expenses include a continued focus on repairing any leaks and replacing our meters. I did pull the WIA project out, and it is not, it is not included in this budget. The entire project is, it's roughly $2 million. What's the number? One, just over $1 million is covered by state aid, state WIA grant. And the rest is funded, will be funded by a long-term bond when the projects are done. But some of the, some of the expense will be in this fiscal year, and some will be in the next fiscal year. And so at a future meeting, I will separate those out and incorporate those into the budget officially. And the sewer fund, there are no changes to that from what was originally proposed. We're still in the process of evaluating costs. We think we're close, but we really, we're still working on those. We have rebid the sludge removal. And so we don't have those bids back yet to see if there's any significant increase in, or decrease in those costs. We are not expecting, we're not expecting, but we don't know. And so if adjustments need to be made, of course, that will be forthcoming. Any, but I do know that the, in the budget, what I show is about, is $211,000 for capital. And on the budget sheet, I put the capital at the bottom, because any capital in needs to go directly for capital and nothing else. And I wanted, I wanted to separate that out from operations. Once we get there, which should be in June, the ongoing annual bond payment, it will be principal only, because we have a no-interest loan from the state. It'll be $204,000. So we will need to make a minor adjustment going forward, but the good news is it's slightly lower than what we budgeted, rather than slightly higher. And so, and that's, those are the notes that I have. Anybody have any questions? On anything budget-related? Okay, hearing none. I'll take a motion to approve the general fund, water fund, and sewer fund. Do you want to read out the resolution? Yes, let me read out the resolution. My apologies. I'm so excited about the numbers. I forgot about the resolution. And there's a slight adjustment to the resolution that you have there. I don't know if you all have it, it's literally taking away 99 cents off the general fund budget. So the resolution, which is resolution number nine. Whereas the Board of Trustees has received and reviewed the tentative budget and held, held a public hearing on SANE. Whereas funding lines and expense lines have been developed, reviewed, and established in board workshop meetings to reflect income projections and expenses from trending in history. Whereas the village general fund has three areas, general fund, water fund, and sewer fund. Now therefore be it result, that the resulting general fund budget will be within the New York State Controller formula for the tax gap and be a reduction in the tax rate. General fund budget will be $2 million. Hold on. Let me just confirm against the number I have. Okay, slightly different. So we're going to amend this resolution. So the general fund budget is going to be $2,249,772. That's a reduction of $4,000. Be it further resolved, the water fund budget and sewer fund budget will remain as listed in the tentative budgets. Water at $560,000, and sewer at $345,965. And those general fund, water fund, and sewer fund budgets are hereby adopted with the treasurer to be fully advised and authorized to proceed accordingly. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Steve, and a second?
Second.
Thank you, Charlie. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Okay, the next item is actually not on the agenda, but I am, I am going to make a motion to create the Climate Smart Task Force.
Do you want to take that as part of the reorganization, with all the other things?
Sure. And Kim, I noticed that there aren't any people listed on our resolution. I'll have that resolution coming, I'm going to find one in my pocket. Oh, who's second? Who else? That's it, here it is. So let's, okay, so this will be resolution number 10. This is the Village Reorganization and Resolution. I have a couple of things I want to point out, and I know there are a couple of amendments. Do I need to make, get a motion and then do amendments? Do you guys know?
If I have to motion it, if I have to adopt it.
And then make amendments?
Accept it, and then they can go on.
The amendments, that's what I was thinking, okay. So we have a resolution for, to broad-form consolidated reorganization. Just in case I can read it. Let me read it. Whereas the Board of Trustees has received and reviewed the various annual reorganization documents, including the meeting schedule, official newspaper, and the mayor's appointees, officers, designations, with any new appointments listed. And whereas under Village Law 3-3013, the mayor must appoint, with board approval, the offices of clerk, treasurer, deputy clerk, associate justice, and members of boards. Whereas the board has determined that Village Law 4-41232 requires the designation of banks and of trust companies for the deposit of all village monies. Whereas the board has determined to pay a fixed rate for mileage as reimbursement to village officials and employees who use their personal automobiles while performing official duties. Whereas the board is determined to authorize payment in advance of, in advance of audit of claims for public utility services, postage, freight, and express charges. And whereas all claims must be presented at the next regular meeting for audit. Whereas the claimant and the officer incurring or approving the claim are jointly and severally liable for any amount the Board of Trustees disallows. Whereas this is to be held during the coming official year. NICOM's Winter Legislative Meeting, NICOM's Annual Meeting and Training School, NICOM's Fall Training School, NICOM's Public Works Training School, and the following county association meetings. Dutchess County Supervisors and Mayors Association, Dutchess County Planning Association. Whereas attendance by certain municipal officials and employees at one or more of these meetings, conferences, or schools benefit the municipality. And whereas the board is meeting in person on April 8, 2024. And whereas the board is aware of the existing Ethics Code and Procurement Code as embodied in our local law, and is reminded of SANE. Whereas the board intends to complete the annual reorganization with consolidated voting and move to other business. Now therefore be it result, the Board approves the mayor's appointments as listed below. Clerk, two-year term, Jennifer Kavanaugh, term ends April 6, 2026. Deputy clerk, one-year term, Diana Devens, term ends April 7, 2025. Associate Justice, one-year term, Thomas Mansfield, term ends April 7, 2025. Fire Inspector, Gary Beck, Deputy Fire Inspector, Thomas Keith. Planning Board, five-year term. David Marcus and Weiss, term ends April 2, 2029. Zoning Board of Appeals, five-year term. Eric Cathell, Chair, term ends April 2, 2029. Village Green Committee, one-year terms. Kim Bradley-Ricard, liaison. Brian, is it Foran or Foran?
Foran.
Foran, term end, the terms all end April 7, 2025. David Pearson, Kathy Pearson, Jason Baker, Brenda Cagle, ex officio. Events Committee, one-year terms. Mel Corca-Carvalho is liaison. Karen Smythe, Amy Smith, term ends April 7, 2025. Same for the remainder of the list. Gabrielle Melton, Jeffrey Walsh, and Nora Feldhugsen.
Felisa.
Thank you. Public Spaces Initiative, one-year terms. Steve Appenzeller liaison, Perry Allen. Term ends for everyone on April 7, 2025. Ash Bradley-Ricard, Molina Polina Malinkin, Nicole Rogers, Betsy Brower, Lynda DeGasper. Human Relations Committee, one-year terms. Mel Corca-Carvalho liaison, David Marcus and Weiss, and Renee Zhang. Both terms end April 7, 2025. Communications Committee, one-year terms. Mel Corca-Carvalho liaison, Karen Smythe, and Lauren Cunningham. End in her term, April 7, 2025. The Main Street Committee is on hiatus. The board designates the following institutions as depositories of all monies received by the village treasurer, clerk, and receiver of taxes. Name of institutions: Key Bank and M&amp;T Bank. And the board will approve reimbursement to such officers and employees at the current federal IRS rate per mile, in effect, at the time of the trip. The board authorizes payment in advance of audit of claims for public utility services, postage, freight, and express charges. All such claims must be presented at the next regular meeting for audit and the claimant. And the officer incurring or approving the claims are jointly and severably liable for any amount the Board of Trustees disallows. And the board acknowledges review and familiarity with the Ethics Code and Procurement Code of the Village. That the following officers and employees are authorized to attend the following schools. Mayor, Board of Trustees, clerk, treasurer. NICOM's Winter Legislative Meeting, Annual Meeting and Training School, Fall Training School. Mayor, Highway Foreman, NICOM's Public Works Training School. Mayor, Dutchess County Supervisors and Mayors Association. Planning Board and Zoning Board of Appeals members, Planning and Zoning Clerk, Dutchess County Planning Association. The board appoints the Daily Freeman, also known as Media News Group, as the official newspaper. And renews, renews the meeting schedule as follows. All meetings are held in Village Hall and are open to the public. Village of Red Hook Justice Court, Traffic Court, is the first Wednesday at 6:00 p.m. Village of Red Hook Criminal Court is the third Wednesday at 3:00 p.m. Planning Board, the second Thursday at 6:30. Zoning Board of Appeals, the fourth Thursday at 6:30. Communications Committee, the first Wednesday at 1:30. Events Committee, the second Tuesday at 6:00 p.m. Human Relations Committee, the first Thursday at 7:00 p.m. Almost done. Public Spaces Initiatives, fourth Saturday at 10:00 a.m. Village Green, the second Sunday at 6:00 p.m. The months. These, the months that are listed, September, December, March, and July, June, we will be adjusting in a moment. Village Board of Trustees, May 13, June 10, July 15, August 5, September 9, October 7, November 4, December 9, January 13, February 10, March 10, April 14 at 7:00 p.m. Village Board Workshops, April 25, May 23, June 27, July 25, August 27, 22, September 26, October 24, November 21, December 19, January 23, February 27, and March 27 at 7:00 p.m. I would like a motion to approve this resolution. Recognize that we will have discussion and adjustments after motion and second.
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Kim. Okay. First, we do need to adjust the Village Green dates. It's October, January, April, and July, correct?
Correct.
So that's the first adjustment.
Is that the, what?
Sorry. It's just one month later than what's listed. So October, January, April, and July.
Thank you.
I just have a question.
I might change the order of that, just to be with the, the, the.
Fiscal year?
The Village calendar. I'd make it.
July, October, January, April? If you're going with fiscal year.
Well, it starts April, July, October, January. Because we have the April Board Meeting.
Works for me. Regarding the Village Board of Trustee Meetings, the reason why they are listed out by date is they are not all the second Monday. July 15 is the third Monday, August 5 is the first Monday, October 7 is the first Monday, and November 4 is the first Monday. October 7 is the first Monday because the second Monday is Columbus Day, Indigenous Day, Canadian Thanksgiving Day, in case you didn't know that. And November, in November, the second Monday is Veterans Day. So this way we start out with the writing. And then July 15, there's some vacations in there, and same with August 5.
Can I ask quickly if it has an update on the website?
No, because it has not been approved for the. Once, once we.
You can do that. You have the ability. Okay, great.
And then just a question that I had regarding the being authorized to attend the following. They're not all schools. So can we just add, because, for example, the Dutchess County Supervisors and Mayor's Association is just a meeting. It's not a school.
It's got that, that's just a boilerplate thing, so you can choose to whatever you want.
How about schools slash meetings? I also attend the Dutchess County Transportation Council. I am technically the liaison from the Supervisors and Mayor's Association, but.
There's some trade.
Transportation Council.
I'm going to have to change on the first page, too.
Yep. And then the other adjustment would be to add the Climate Smart Task Force. We'll make those one-year terms. And we have Kim and Steve. Are you both liaison, or do you want to have one be the lead liaison? You want to be the lead liaison because you write the, you write the notes?
Sure.
Okay. We'll make Steve the liaison. And who do you have now for the?
Betsy Brower.
Yep.
Hannah Inman.
How do you spell the?
F.J.N.N.A. And then Inman, I-N-M-A-N.
I-N-M-A-N. Okay.
And then Josh Bardfield.
Bardfield?
Bardfield.
Bardfield. Thank you.
And Alex Keller.
Okay. That covered my notes. Does anybody else have any other adjustments? So we are going to, I'm going to make a motion, and I will make this motion that we make the adjustments that we've just discussed. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Steve. Any further discussion on the adjustments or amendments to this resolution? Hearing none. All in favor of making the discussed amendments? Approving the, approving the discussed amendments?
Can we approve the resolution as amended?
We don't, I think we have to approve the amendments and then we approve the resolution as amended.
Okay.
We want to be officially correct. All in favor of approving the amendments?
So moved.
No, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. And now, all in favor of approving the resolution as amended?
Aye.
Aye. There we go. Thank you. Mark of business just on there. The next item on the agenda is Catalyst, which is a new name for us because it used to be Software Computer Associates. And then it was PCI, which I forget what that stands for, something, computer, something. And they've changed their name yet again to Catalyst. This is the software, this is the firm that provides us with the software and the maintenance and support for our taxes and our utility bills. And I can say that Jen is good buddies and on speed dial with their, with their support person and, what's that?
Two.
Oh, they have two persons. And probably the best positive that I heard was he always, they always answer, or they call back, which is not, not always the case. So this is a new, this is a, it's probably a new contract because we've not, it's a license renewal, but it's now with Catalyst versus the prior companies. It is an increase, and it does have a 6% increase. It's a three-year contract with a six-year increase, 6% increase embedded into it each year following. The first year is $2,800. This is a critical software. It will cost significantly more than a 6% increase to change to a different software company. And so I am comfortable with proceeding with these folks. Certainly over this timeframe, we will investigate if there's another municipality that has a software system that they are excited about. And I have not heard anyone be excited about their software system, but there are several other municipalities that use this system as well. So I guess I need a, I need a motion to authorize me to sign this contract. Do I have a motion?
Can I ask one question?
You may.
After motion. Oh, sorry.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion?
This says utility billing water, this also does sewer now, too, right?
Yes, it does.
Is there an issue that it doesn't mention it, or is that okay?
No.
Okay. It was originally set up for water, and we use it for both.
Yeah, I was just wondering.
So it's called, like, it's called water. And that's the name of it. Their software, but we use it for both.
Got it. Great. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Thank you. And a big thank you to Jen, who wrestles with this software and making it work for us. What's that?
Your.
Budget adjustment. Oh, I printed out one, and I don't know. Let me see if I can find it. I have a correction. Do you all have it, too? Do you all have the, it's, it's, is this still familiar?
No.
No? Okay. I'm going to read it, and I'm going to, and I will make you copies. This is a resolution for budget adjustments to general, to Village general water and sewer funds. Whereas there were errors in the current budget in prior budget adjustments. And whereas the Village Board desires to correct the prior amendments to the general water and sewer fund budgets to reflect current information. Whereas the Village Board has reviewed the following schedule of budget adjustment corrections. Oh, gosh, did I? Oh, no. Now therefore it is resolved on the other page. So for the general fund. Account 8010.1, which is zoning per serve, which is payroll. What the, what it shows is the current budget is $40,000. The adjustment is minus $5,000 for the revised budget of $35,000. This is correcting an adjustment that was made on November 13. The starting budget was, I think I had it at $80,000. So the adjustment was reducing it by 45 to get to 35. So this just gets us to 35 correctly. And then the counter adjustment is 8010.48, which is zoning contract expense per serve. The current budget is, should have been $45,000 with an adjustment up of $5,000 for a revised budget of $50,000. It was the same change. The current budgets were listed incorrectly. The revised budget is the same that we had approved before, but this just gets us, gets it correctly. For the water budget, under the water account 8320.47, water repairs. Current budget, $48,000. An increase of $2,000 for the revised budget of $50,000 is correct. So September 11th adjustment. The September 11 budget adjustment showed the current budget of $50,000, when it should have been at $48,000. The addition of $2,000 was already covered by a $2,000 increase in the, in 2144.8 water tapping fee revenue. And then for the sewer fund, account 1710.1, admin per serve. Current budget, $5,000. Adjustment down of $500 to a revised budget of $4,500, which corrects a September 28 adjustment. The September 28 budget adjustment showed a current budget of $10,000, when it should have been $5,000. The September 28 budget adjustment was a $3,000 deduction. There was a November 2 budget adjustment, which was a $2,500 increase. So this deduction of $500 starts with the correct current budget and now ends where it should be. Now therefore be it resolved that the Village of Red Hook approves these corrections to the general water and sewer fund budgets as shown in the schedule above. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Steve. And second?
Second.
Thank you, Charlie. And I will just confirm that. Thank you. That our treasurer went through this, and I went through this, all the budget's adjustments, and so I am. Actually, it was the treasurer who highlighted the fact that I had made these mistakes. So I am accountable to her for that. So, and I did go through, I reviewed them all myself, and so I am confident that these are correct. I apologize for the confusion. Any other, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, confirming that the next workshop meeting is April 25, and that the next board meeting is May 13. Treasurer's Report. Our treasurer is on a wonderful eclipse and anniversary trip. And so I am your treasurer in the seat room to read the treasurer's report. And the account balances as of 3/31/2024. General Fund, $835,530.76. Water Fund, $348,326.65. Payroll Clearing Account, $36,363.38. Sewer Fund, $41,595. Hardscrabble, $3,443.68. Village Green, $9,761.63. Health Insurance, $12,978.14. Petty Cash, $52.93. Reserve Checking Balances. Fire Department, $7,699.23. Police, $17,485.67. USDA Water Reserve, $142,274.77. Highway, $29,370.36. Snow Reserve. Just a note on the highway reserve. A large, the majority of that reserve, we agreed to use for a portion of paying down the loan for the garbage truck. And so I would expect that at the next, at the next meeting, that will go down significantly. Snow Reserve, $3,359.83. Tower Reserve, $18,145.37. Unemployment, $7,197.54. Court Reserve, $3,379.41. Office Reserve, $996.15. And then monthly expenses for the month of March. General Fund, $141,783.81. Water Fund, $210,075.39. Payroll Clearing Account, $2,442.45. And Sewer is $149,986.98. And this was prepared by our treasurer, Lori Urban. May I have a motion to accept our treasurer's report?
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. And thank you to Lori. For anyone who needs, there is water in the kitchen and hallway. Please feel free. There, there's, I know, well, it's a little stuff in the air. It's the downside to springtime. Okay, now it is time for my reports. I'll start with the police report. This is for the month of March. We have 281 incidents, 162 in the Village of Red Hook, 106 in the Town of Red Hook, and 13 in the Village of Tivoli. Water tower security checks, there were 101. Uniform traffic tickets, there were 98. 53 in the Village of Red Hook, 37 in the Town of Red Hook, and 8 in the Village of Tivoli. Parking tickets, there were 4 in the Village of Red Hook, 106 in the Town of Red Hook, and 2 in the Village of Tivoli. Arrests, there were 3 in the Village of Red Hook, 2 in the Town of Red Hook, and 3 in the Village of Tivoli. A total of 8. I do have a fire incident report. I had not received the November report for 2023, and I now have it, so I can just give you a summary of the calendar year of 2023. There were, I didn't print out the total, total. There were a total of 285 incidents in the, in the village. Of those, 175 were in the 300s, which are EMS calls, rescue, medical assists. There were 71 in the 700 category, which is alarm, smoke alarm, false alarms, et cetera. There was one fire, which is a fire, building fire, cooking fire, brush fire. There were three hazardous conditions or power lines down. There were 24 assist-in related service call person in distress. There were nine good intent call hazmat release investigation, smoke scare. There were two severe weather or natural disaster. And that's, that's the total. And then in, outside the village, there were 727 total incidents. So in 2023, 28% of the incidents were in the village and 72% were outside the village. And the proportion of items are similar, though there were 20 fires. And the proportion of items are similar, though there were twenty fires in the, outside the village and only one in the village. And there tend to be a higher percentage of EMS calls in the village versus outside the village. And then I have February's incidents. In the month of February, there were forty-one incidents within the village. Twenty-three were EMS type calls. Eleven were alarms. We did have one fire. We had five assist invalid service call person in distress, and we had one good intent call, smoke scare. And in the, outside the village, there were ninety-three total. So in the month of February, thirty-one percent of the calls were within the village. And of those ninety-three outside the village, there was, there were fifty-one EMS calls, twenty-six alarms, one fire, two hazards, nine person in distress, assist invalid, and four good intent smoke scare calls. So that is the fire. Sewer project. We are still in the process of working through the final paperwork. We are getting closer, and we are scheduled to close for our long-term financing in June. Red Hook Public Library, I do not have a written report, but I can report that the library has elected a new board president, and that new board president is Amy Gray. Abraham's Tap, Abraham's Park Task Force, which I neglected to add to the, to the committee. It's arguably a subset of the Public Spaces Initiative. We have a meeting on Friday. I will bring forth something more formal at our next board meeting. But what the Abraham's Task Force is doing is looking at Abraham's Park and in, with the goal of creating a master plan on how we can better utilize the seven acres that we have as, as a public park. And we started this process before the Cooking Ham Farm project came to light, and so the work now is just adding that as a, as a benefit or bonus north of Abraham's Park. Insurance, just to share, we finalized our, all of our health insurance renewals, and we have made the shift, we've made a slight shift in the medical insurance. Because we cover the deductible, having a higher deductible doesn't make any, doesn't change anything for the employees, and it reduces the, the regular cost. And in looking back at the usage of deductible, I feel very confident that what we've done is at least maintain, we will maintain the cost of what we have been paying for medical insurance, and there's a small possibility it might actually go down. And then that, I believe, I guess I can also say, we, we, this past week had a visit from Nimer, which is our insurance company that provides us with our, it's listed as unallocated insurance, which is about fifty thousand dollars. It covers law enforcement, it covers auto, it covers building insurance, it's sort of a whole conglomerate of types of insurance. And they did a safety audit for the, or risk assessment, I guess they called it, for the first time in several years. And, and as far as I can tell, everything went well. Thank you both to Jen and also to Lieutenant Hildenbrandt and Highway Foreman Jake Smith for preparing the way, so that was a, was a nice quick visit. And then we have the workers' compensation annual safety audit is coming next week. Looking forward to that because there are a few things on their list. They've been on there for several years and we fixed them, so I look forward to having them notice that we've made progress. And that is all that I have to report on. Turning it over to Deputy Mayor Carol.
One thing, we're low on battery. Do we have a power cord for this? Maybe two?
Uh, yes, we do.
Yes, we do.
I can do that while you report.
Okay.
So Red Hook Together did not meet for the month of April. However, since I wrote this report, there has been a new meeting time scheduled for this Thursday at noon at the Bard, on Bard Campus, the Berger House. And there is no theme set for that meeting. Okay. And then Red Hook, and I'll, I'll report on that. Next, next report. Red Hook Town Economic Development Committee, bi-weekly meetings have been taking place at Village Hall on the second, fourth Wednesdays of the month at eight forty AM. On March twentieth, there was a special meeting held to discuss a town, the towns at that time proposed moratoriums. Concerns and objections were raised by multiple members of the committee as well as several guests. Town Supervisor McKeon was awesome in attendance and answered questions. The regularly scheduled March twenty-ninth meeting also focused on the moratorium issue and whether the EDC should submit an official letter. It was decided that one of the members would instead attend a board meeting that evening and speak on behalf of the committee of each of the three moratoriums. Village of Red Hook Communications Committee. The Communications Committee meets every first Wednesday of the month at one thirty PM in the Village Hall conference room. This month's meeting was rescheduled due to conflicts with other meetings. In the past month, a digital version of the What Does the Village Do for You has been posted online under the Stay Informed section on the website. The new sign describing how to reach the police during and after Village Hall business hours has been posted alongside the main door buzzer. I have begun reviewing the current website navigation menus with Village Clerk Jen Kavanaugh in order to incorporate her observations and recommendations. As well as on April fourth, the mayor and I met to discuss progress on the language access grant. We worked to research remaining purchases and identify final goals before the grant period ends as well. And Village of Red Hook, hard, sorry, I forgot to say something. Village of Red Hook Hardscrabble and Events Committee. The Events Committee meets on the third Monday of each month at six PM at Village Hall. Our March twelfth meeting was about the upcoming events in the village, what supports they would need, as well as discussing progress on the event's permit development.
Is it the third? Bill was, was it the third Wednesday?
Oh, you're right. That's been changed. It's the, it's the second.
Tuesday.
Tuesday. You're right. Thank you.
I didn't think we were that far into the month.
That, that was the old date. I apologize. So it's going to be tomorrow. One support they made as well is, we also had a follow-up task meeting on March twenty-fifth to update this year's hardscrabble sponsor packet. Hardscrabble will be on September fourteenth this year, fourteen twenty-four, it's a good way to remember it. And you can follow social media for updates at facebook dot com slash hardscrabble RH and instagram dot com slash village of RH events. The Human Relations Committee meets every first Thursday of the month at seven PM in the Village Hall conference room. We did not meet during the first, during the month of April due to members' travel schedules. The next meeting is May second. Village of Red Hook Highway Department. Street sweeping will take place at the end of April or early May. It will be done before the apple blossom day, which will be held on May eleventh. Street striking will take place after street sweeping has commenced. Please sweep or rake sand and gravel from lawn edges onto the side of the street dispersed in a row, not in a large pile to facilitate cleanup by the street sweeping machines. Village brush slash yard waste pickup will begin again this week, the first full week of the month. Pickups will be scheduled for the first full week of every month pending weather conditions and scheduling. Residents are reminded of the following rules. Place lawn clippings and brush in separate piles. Place piles on the edge of your lawn, not on the sidewalk or the street. Stuffed emergency, longer than six inches in diameter, garbage and/or construction debris will not be picked up. Piles should be limited to six feet by six feet by six feet, and consider combining smaller piles with a neighbor to facilitate. Potholes. You can notify the village of potholes on village roads by calling the village clerk's office or filling out a report or concern form at redhookvillage dot org slash concern. Please note that the village is not allowed to conduct repairs on state highways. If you would like to report a pothole on a state highway, the village can afford your concern, or you can submit your complaint directly to the New York State DOT by calling one eight hundred pothole.
Or do both.
It goes faster than if they have more complaints. A streetlight, if you notice a street light out, you may notify Central Hudson, Central, Central Hudson directly by going to cent, cent dot com E N slash outages, select a corner street light and filling out their online form.
You can also call Village Hall.
That's so true. I should have added that option. And scrap metal program, there was no revenue collected for the last, in the last, since the last report. So that's it for my reports.
Awesome. And before we go on to the next, just going back, I want, I do want to mention two personnel reports. You may have noted that the fire inspector, we, we just appointed a new fire inspector and deputy fire inspector, Clark Kimball, who has been our fire inspector, submitted his resignation and he ended his time with us, with the village of Red Hook in the end of March. And I just want to say publicly what a positive benefit it has been to have Clark Kimball with the village of Red Hook. I believe he's been working for the village for about ten years, and it really has been a joy to work with him and very sad to see him go. And I know that he's got a lot going on, so he's, he's a busy man, but I just want to publicly say thank you to Clark Kimball. The other personnel change is the part-time police officer that we hired in the fall, who had just finished his, or was just finishing his police academy, Jacob, Jacob Haikade, has been offered a job as a full-time state trooper. And the state troopers do not allow him to have another job, so he has submitted his resignation as well. Both sad to see him go and also excited for his future. That was an offer that he needed to take, so. So those, those are two updates on personnel. And then trustee line.
Good evening. Yes, I was a little tardy with my reports to the group for this past month, but to make up for it, I actually wrote them down on a piece of paper. So it was quite special.
Notice the chip. It looks great.
I don't think I included the updated materials management spreadsheet, but that was part of it because I was changing it based on the conversation I had with Jake. So anyway, I'll, I'll start off with materials management. In the month of March, the village highway department collected two point zero seven tons of recycling, and that was made up of point nine tons of combing gold, point four three tons of cardboard, and point seven tons of paper. And the village also collected four point oh three tons of garbage, which was transported to Accra at a total cost of four hundred and ninety-eight dollars and twenty-one cents. Four hundred and sixty-three dollars and forty-five cents of that was tipping fees, and then there was thirty-four dollars and seventy-six cents fuel surcharge. Over the course of the month, the village collected two thousand five hundred and eighty-seven dollars for the sale of garbage tags. And those, those sales were from all three places where you can buy your garbage tags, the Village Hall, Taste Buds, and the Red Hook Public Library. So when I wrote this, I was still trying to talk to Jake, Highway Department, about the Welch dumpster that played a crucial role while we were out of a garbage truck, but is now just collecting, they just dump from the garbage bins around the village and sundry other waste into the dumpster, and that is picked up, I think every week, by Welch and disposed of. So we pay a monthly fee to Welch, but we do not track and have no way of tracking the actual volume of garbage that goes out in that dumpster. So for future purposes, I'm just going to include the, the cost of, of that dumpster in the, the materials management spreadsheet, but we have no way of tracking the amount of garbage.
And Welch won't release that?
Well, because it gets mixed up. I mean, so it doesn't just, they don't just take it individually and.
Got it. So they, they dump it into a truck with other stuff.
Yeah, yeah. So by all accounts.
There may be a way, and this is, it's worth having a conversation with, with Jake to see if there's a way that he can estimate the amount that they, that they pick it up.
Right.
That might be worth.
He may be a bit reticent about that, but we'll see.
Well, I mean, if, if we make an, an estimate of if it's to the top, it's X, and if it's three quarters versus half, I mean, it'd be an estimate, but.
Right. But we're certainly getting closer to including everything in our monthly reports. So that's it for materials management. Next up, the water treatment facilities monthly report. So during the month of March, the water treatment facility treated seven million, seventy-six thousand, one hundred total gallons, which is an average of two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, three hundred gallons per day. That's very similar to this time last year. We also collected three samples that were tested for bacteriological contamination, and all came back clean. And during the month of March, the water treatment plant used seventy-five gallons of sodium hypochlorite, and that comes to an average daily use of two point four gallons And then I am also liaison to the Salkill Watershed Community, and they actually had a meeting in March, so I will report on that.
Charlie, before you leave the water, it's a good time.
Yes.
Sorry, 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 sorry.
I was going to confess that.
Helps me, helps if I actually read what you wrote.
So Salkill Watershed Community met via Zoom on March twenty-sixth to discuss organizational needs and priorities for twenty-twenty-four. In attendance were representatives from Bard College, Winnicky Land Trust, the Hudson River Watershed Alliance, and members of the Red Hook community. Emily Vale, ED for the Hudson River Watershed Alliance, an umbrella organization for groups like the Salkill Watershed Community, stated that a lot of similar volunteer groups were struggling post-COVID. Some had ceased to operate while others were trying to reorganize. And, you know, the Salkill Watershed Community has been trying to get back in the swing of things since COVID. Key priorities for the Salkill Watershed Community are figuring out finances, application for and dispersment of grants, organizational leadership, and the role of Bard College in what way it can assist the group. The group recognized the value of the current suite of Salkill Watershed Community programs, including monitoring and assisting the amphibian migration in the spring, new trails initiatives, riparian buffer protection, water quality and groundwater testing, community outreach, and responding to local issues, i.e., recently the Salkill Watershed Community commented on the new state wetland protection regulations. They are also interested in access to a physical meeting space. So I said I would bring that up with the village, because the Village Hall would be a very convenient location for those meetings. Not even every month, but probably more like eight, nine, ten meetings a year.
And you meet in the evening?
Yeah. Well, I mean, yes, evenings, just because some people like me still work.
Given that you are ideas on and thus can let everyone in and be with and out, that makes, that makes that an easy one?
Right. So I just need to figure out, coordinate all the other meetings and schedules that are going on. I will do that.
There's a handy list of all the meeting times.
Yes, I know. This was a very good meeting to bring that up. I also serve on the Community Preservation Fund Advisory Board, and that did not meet the month of March.
Do you know how, do you know how much money is left in the Community Preservation Fund?
I don't. If they made a big withdrawal for Cooking Ham Farms, so no, I don't.
Maybe for the next meeting you can find out what that is. That would be, that would be helpful. Maybe for the next meeting, you can find out what that is. That would be, that would be helpful.
Because I believe some went out and some's going to come back too, right?
Yes, presumably it will go back upon sale.
Buying the fee and then selling the easement. And so water sewer utility bill adjustments. There was one. And do we need to formally?
You just need to, you just need to review it as a board.
Okay.
It was approved by the mayor.
Good, good. Shall I just read it out?
Sure.
Okay. So this is the utility bill adjustment report for January, March, 2023. So for account 34900 Victoria Maze, leaky fixtures, plumber invoice provided. Your account was credited $38.96. And that means once you have benefited from the bill adjustment, that can mean no additional adjustments allowed for five years.
That's the, that's the leak adjustment policy that we, I believe it was about a year ago that we, we approved. This was so that if you have a, a water break or you left your water hose on by mistake all night long, that you can get a break. But the five years is so that you're not asking for a break every year. So that is, that is pursuant to our, to our policy.
Okay.
I have one quick question, Charlie, on the materials management. I didn't see any tag revenue from Max or Agway. Are they still a point of sale?
They are.
Yes.
Okay.
Actually, I think they just made a purchase of more tags that wouldn't have made it into this report.
That's true.
They're not pulled out. They're in the general status.
Okay. Right. Okay. Thanks.
Yeah, Agway, Taste Bugs, they add a, a small service fee on top and then the library also has them and they, they, they charge the same amount we do. It's a very nice service that the library affords us. Affords us or arguably the residents of the village.
Did your chart used to like say which everyone costs or how many were sold at any place?
I haven't reported it that way, but.
Yeah, I found it interesting. So thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Charlie. Next up, trustee Bradley Ricar. Am I now pronouncing your name correct? Okay. You know, it takes me a while, but I'll get there.
It's okay. I learned it too.
My father's name is Richard, so that's where I was headed.
All right. For the Village Green Committee, the current balances of the Village Green related budget accounts. Sorry, I should say at the end of March, not December. For the Community Beautification, there was $440.03 with no, as a balance and no expenses on that line is saying that the shade tree contractual expenses, which leaves a balance at $11,667.87. And the Village Green Committee checking account, as was presented earlier, $9,761.63. And this includes an increase due to a new bench project in the workspace to the donation of the Old Dutch Village Garden Club that will be placed at the Christ Church on Broadway. And at the end of the month, the Village Green Committee via one of the members of myself attended the New York State Urban Forestry's 2024 Annual Tree Cities Recognition Luncheon at SUNY New Paltz. And not only were we recognized as being a member of the Tree Cities Program for 22 years, but we're also able to network with fellow Tree City, Tree Line, and Tree Campus members. And it was a great opportunity to network workshop ideas and to discuss what other people are doing in the tree world. As the Village Green is working on diversifying our tree population here in the village and boosting our native tree species, we look forward to tackle large projects right in inventory of trees. If we don't know what we have, it's harder to diversify our tree population. And this project is quite the undertaking and we hope to be able to reach out for some grant money and other support to help us get it done. We also need more people to help with the project. So if you are interested in learning more about tree diversity and how that affects the health of the village, please reach out to us. Our annual tree planting is early. Last month, we were estimated the tree planting to be at the end of the month. However, we received notice from the nursery that the trees will be delivered this Wednesday and the planting is scheduled for this Saturday, April 13th. If you are interested in planting trees with us, no experience necessary, we're meeting at the village lot at 9:00 AM for a little tree demonstration and a proclamation of Arbor Day as in honor of our annual Arbor Day tree planting celebration. And then we will break up into teams and plant trees throughout the village. Residents and businesses interested in having a tree or trees planted on their adjacent village street or New York State Highway, right of ways volunteering for planting days, or becoming a member of the Village Green Committee can reach out to myself or David Pearson or the clerk Jen Kavanaugh. And meetings are open to the public and we're actively seeking members of our community to join. So please reach out if you're interested. And in lieu of our next meeting, which would be on Sunday, we have a planting day on Saturday. So April's meeting will actually happen already. For the sewer department, we've gone through one thorough round of the sewer code and are on the second round, ensuring accuracy, feasibility, and fairness. And we continue to work with the village engineer on the planning of expansion phase two. As a reminder to all residents, whether you're in the sewer use area or not, please be kind to your pipes. Put only the three peas in your toilet. And while you're in the kitchen or near other drains, no fats, oils, or grease, also known as fog, as they clog up the pipes and make the system stressed. What goes down to the drain matters. And if you are in the sewer use area and the emergency alarm goes off, call the village sewer operator at 845-758-1081. Option eight. Press the silence alarm button only after notifying the sewer operator. Otherwise, we won't know your alarm is going off. And please do not open the box or tamper with village-owned equipment. For the speed limit initiative, Great Meeting has worked on several tasks of the report and actually just sent the report earlier in this month and we have yet to review it. But we should, this is the first of many reports we will receive from them throughout the next coming months. And the Village of Red Hook Town and Red Hook Greenway Trails Committee, which I sit as a liaison for, we did not meet during the month of March as there was no new business. And it would have been the same time as the volunteer Salt Kill Trail Cleanup and the State of the County Address. And so the committee voted to hold off on meeting last month. And the Climate Smart Communities started to build our task force and are looking forward to planning the goals of this team. If you're interested in being involved and show us our studies and knowledge, the, the way to best move forward and working within the team setting to build a pathway forward, we're interested in your input. Thank you.
Thank you. And last but never least, trustee Adam Zeller.
Good evening. The Red Hook Village Building Department report is as follows. For the month of March, there were five building permits issued, one certificate of occupancy, two certificates of compliance, and one municipal search. There were no orders to remedy, stop work orders, do not occupy notices, notice of violations or court appearances. There was one complaint for Three John Street, which was remedied. Now there's no issue. And there was one fire inspection. And in connection with that activity, there was $1,475 of fees collected. Planning board actions at the March 14th meeting. Signage was approval, grant was approval was granted to a property located at 7478 South Broadway. A site plan approval granted by resolution to a property located at 7385 South Broadway. A site plan application for 59 Fifth Street was tabled to April 11th, which is later this week. A site plan application for 7536 North Broadway also tabled to the April 11th meeting. A special permit approval was granted to a property at 32 Garden Street. A site plan application for a property at St. John Street was also tabled to the upcoming April 11th meeting. And also tabled to that meeting was a site plan application extension for a property located on Firehouse Lane. And there was no zoning board of appeals meeting due to no agenda items. Before going into the public spaces initiative on the topic of zoning review, we just received a first draft of a mini report from Nelson Pope and Voorhees, who is the firm that is working with us to do some planning for the Village Gateway Cookingham Project. As I said, that came in yesterday, late in the day on Sunday. So the mayor and I will be looking at that, reviewing it, and scheduling a follow-up meeting with them to discuss that and next steps. For the public spaces initiative, a meeting was held on March 30th that was held here at Village Hall. And the key topics covered during that meeting were, were as follows. The topic of public purpose for spending funds was discussed. So that will be integrated into the spending for the committee as, as they move forward throughout the year. And one of the themes for this coming year is public outreach. And as part of that, the public spaces initiative team had a table, a large table at the Red Hook Repair Cafe, which was held at the Red Hook Community Center this past Saturday, April 6th. They gave out seats to people and spoke with a number of folks who were there, building awareness of what they do and helping provide some welcome garden advice as we move into springtime. On June 15th, there will be a Hello Spring event, which will be held in partnership with the Red Hook Community Center. And the specific activities are being finalized, but they will include crafts for children, advice for gardening. There's two master gardeners who are part of that, who are a wonderful resource for any questions folks have about their gardens and making them thrive and using native plants and all the other important factors. There will also be activities centered around the Seed Commons Library, which is resident at the moment at the community center. Other events which were discussed briefly and there will be ongoing planning for that as well as coordination with the events committee include Hard Scramble Day in October 19th, Pumpkins in the Park event, following up on last year's inaugural event of that, of that nature. And there's also some discussion about events with historic Red Hook. And there will be participation at the Then and Now event coming up in June and composting event at the recycling center was also discussed as a possibility. Some good news and progress on the Pollinator Pathway. The Red Hook Village submission was accepted and now there is a Red Hook Village page live on the website, which is at www.pollinator-pathway.org/towns/red-hook. And there's a wealth of information about native and pollinator plants there and can learn more about what's happening in Red Hook. One of the members of the committee is also working with the library. They have some initiative for doing plantings and identifying site-appropriate species at the rear by the pond and a number of species were identified as good candidates for that piece of property, including swamp milkweed, white wood aster, wild geranium, chokeberry, broadleaf, and lie leaf sage. So I need to look up, I know what some of these are, but I'm looking forward to learning about the rest of them. And finally, at the last meeting, Deputy Town Supervisor Bill Hamill joined as a guest speaker. He attended New York State Pollinator Garden event, who actually had a broader scope, but there were a lot of events about pollinator gardens and he shared information about the town's efforts in that area. And they're looking at green spaces which could be used for pollinator gardens, possibly alongside current and/or future solar farm sites, which are kind of a good complement for that type of planting. And that is it for the public spaces initiative report.
Can I ask two questions?
Sure.
Is, was there any talk when you talked about the, the library land about invasive species? And mitigating any of those before they planted anything else?
That was not discussed. It's a good question, but they, obviously the things which are being planted are not invasive.
Because there's a lot of tree, tree of heaven that are growing.
Yeah, the anthem is a huge problem, all of them.
Yeah, I, I realize. I'm just, if.
Yeah, no, I, I don't know what discussion. That's the follow-up and.
That would be great. I would appreciate that if a neighbor. And then also the Hello Spring event. Did you identify a theme that was? Or is that?
A specific theme wasn't discussed. I mean, other than, you know, sort of, you know, it's actually going to be in June, so it's sort of well into springtime, but it's also the time of the year when it's really ideal for planting and expanding and building upon your gardens. So but I will find out if there's a more focused theme beyond.
But just because in that, that document I shared, there are specific themes that you are allowed to spend public funds on. So it's just good to make sure that it's still compliant. Okay. Thank you.
I will, I will add that April was the state of New York issued a proclamation making April Native Plant Month. And there's actually quite a bit of good information about native plants and their importance. And I'm now realizing that I intended to put that in my newsletter, but I didn't. But native, native plants are really important and there's several reasons for native plants being important. One, and native trees as well. Just to reiterate, if you're planting native plants, you are, plants are there for the various pollinators, insects, animals. And if we are planting native, that's what they're expecting to find because everybody is used to being here. The other is by using a native, it's used to being here, it's used to the climate, even though it's somewhat changing, it is changing. And so usually it is less subject to disease and bugs. And so it can also reduce the amount of any kind of pesticide that you might think you need to use. So native plants, it's a good thing. I am also realizing that we didn't talk in any detail about the water projects that are upcoming. And I, they are proceeding, but we do not have any official start dates yet. The three projects that we're working on, one is the SCADA control system. That has to finish before the water tank rehabilitation can take place. It is actually, it has begun. It's not something that anyone's going to see. It's a, it's a computer system that goes in the, in the water treatment building. But I don't, I think they're still waiting on some equipment. The water main replacement. The contracting company got their approval for their MWBE submittal two weeks ago. And I know they are hoping to get started in late spring. So as soon as we get some information, I know you gentlemen are, are in the target area. And so not only will we give public information this way, you will also be contracted, contacted directly so that you know when it's, when it's coming. And that's it for my notes. Any other general business that anybody has? No. Public comment?
On the water project on Cherry Street, I'd still like to know what they're going to do. I think the newsletter said it would be a narrow up street, which is insane. It's only a foot difference from what it is, what they want to do. They would make it 20 foot instead of 23. I think it had 22, was it?
We measured 22 and a half.
22 and a half, something like that. But to narrow that street out is insane because of the traffic.
I, I don't, I don't recall a specific note on, on narrowing the street, so I will follow up on that and confirm.
Yeah, well, you did that in the rest of the village last time, not you, but, you know.
Ah, okay.
The problem with that is we have a lot of truck traffic there. And two trucks are not going to pass each other with that. And we got to turn off Grave Street. It's a sharp turn. Trucks have a hard time navigating it. A lot of time they probably pull it on the corner there. You can look at the notches on that. And at the, on the top of Cherry Street, you've got Hep in Turn, which is problematic with two large vehicles. Plus, there's a, there's a driveway being cut in for cul-de-sac up on the top, which is going to be more traffic coming in on Hep in Turn, which is kind of weird.
That project is, is in the very, very beginning stages.
Yeah, I just, another reason why, you know, you don't want to make it any narrower than what it is. And the other concern we have is the height of it. Because we want the water to go to drains, not into our basements.
I doubt that. That's certainly true. I will follow up. The discussion around the, the width of the street is not something that's come up in a meeting that I've been in, but I'm, I'm sure there's something. And I will talk to the engineer about that. I mean, ideally, if we could figure out how to get the trucks, not the big trucks not to be going on your road, that would be better, wouldn't it? not to be going on your road, that would be better, wouldn't it?
Well, the alternative they've got is the center of the village, which is a disaster for large trucks trying to make a turn. And they can't make turns like we've gone through with the pot shop over there. They were going to bring out the 18-wheeler's out the back, and they can't make a left-hand turn from Grave Street down to Cherry, go back to.
That's, that is, that is an issue that I believe the Planning Board is reviewing.
Yeah, I was at the meeting with them, and, you know, you can't do it. I mean, I've seen them, they usually have to back up all the way up the street, go across into CVS and come out through their lot, or back into the Mason's and turn around and come back out the other way, because you can't, just can't cut it.
But in terms of those who use Cherry Street as a cut-through, it would probably be better if they went through the, I mean, I'm told by DOT, there's plenty of room to make a turn at the, at the main intersection, so for the driver's.
About that, I came up once before about a roundabout there. I have, that's totally insane. There is no way a lowboy trailer can make a turn. There's no way a buck, hook, and ladder can make a turn. There's no way a 48-foot trailer or 40-foot trailer is going to make a turn. I mean, if we're driving in golf carts, we can do it. But nine is a main thoroughfare. We've got oversized loads, modular homes, huge generators, steel things come down. They're never going to make a turn there. You'd have to take out probably about 200 feet from each corner where those buildings have to go.
I am, I am not a traffic expert. I don't know if you've seen the newer roundabouts that they have in other parts of Dutchess County. They, it's defined.
They don't have the truck traffic.
No, some do. Route 55 does.
Not what we've got coming straight down. There's some main thoroughfare from here down to Westchester County, a lot of big equipment comes down there.
Very true.
Oversized trails, double trailers, you know, just, you couldn't get a fire truck through there. A hook and ladder could not make a turnaround roundabout, especially if there's any traffic there.
Well, the newer, the newer roundabouts that they have, it's not a fixed item with a curb, that basically there's, there's a good, a large portion of it that a truck can drive right over. That's the way they've set it up.
Goes straight through.
If not straight through, mostly straight through.
Well, it's no traffic light, so there'll be no crossing over there.
Well, then you do the, you do the crosses, well, that's not the project we're talking about, but understood in terms of, in terms of confirming what the size of the road is and recognizing that there's a lot of truck traffic there, and then we need to keep that in mind. Totally understand that. Thank you.
DOT has the final say on that, correct, state?
Yes, as it relates to Route 9 and 199, absolutely.
Okay.
Yes, that's, they have plenty of experts who've studied this all day long.
It's the state.
And it's the state.
I work for the state.
There you go.
Me telling you.
Thank you.
Okay, that's it for me.
Anything from you?
No.
Thanks for being here, we appreciate it. Anybody else have any comments? Oh, we need to, we do not have executive session tonight. I need a motion to pay bills after audit.
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Without any further business, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Do we need to close the? We did that, yeah.
Great, perfect.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.